All right, good evening. And welcome to the, I guess, the third installment of our Charter Review Committee tour here. And we're at Ag New and really appreciate the way MISD has allowed us to use their facilities. And Jeff and I would like to welcome everybody to the at-large citizen input meeting with the Charter Review Committee. We're here tonight to receive citizen input regarding possible city charter amendments. If you wish to speak, please complete a registration card at the table located just outside or right back there. And fill that card out and then it'll be brought to us and we'll call you up to speak. When you approach the podium, just a reminder to give us your name and address so that we can record that in the minutes that are being taken at this meeting. And it'll be on the video as well. The meeting is being videotaped tonight. And we have two Charter Review Committee members who told us they would not be here tonight. Dr. Shepherd is celebrating Rosh Hashanah, or I guess honoring Rosh Hashanah, I'm not sure you celebrate it. And then Ron Ward has some other obligations that he needed to attend to tonight. So I appreciate the committee being here tonight and your diligence and attendance. And with that, we would like to welcome to the podium Mr. Jimmy Shields.
I've always thought that there are never enough great ideals. And I'm not saying that the city council doesn't get a lot of great ideals, but you get diversity with changes. And it doesn't, it kind of takes some of the stale out of the council when you can have term limits to bring in new and fresher ideals. And not that they're always the best ideals, but that's for other folks to think of those. And I think for a community like Mesquite, that has always been on the threshold of being an active, growing community, we are there to have new and better things. And I hope that the committee looks into the ideal of this. And maybe it's not the total solution for the city of Mesquite, but I think that for some reason, there is a lot of apathy and this may be a wake-up call to wake up some citizens of our great community, to have people to step up and serve our great city because we are an excellent city. I've been here since 1983. And that's a long time to kind of sit back and look and see what others have done. And maybe I haven't stepped up to the plate or something like that, and that's not really my intention of being here. But I do like the fact that I think fresh ideals will be a given if you do look at this as a strong consideration as well. And I appreciate your time and I'm glad that you are looking into this and hope that it's a win-win for the city in this regard because that's the important thing. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. If you could, could you give us your name and your address?
Oh, yes. My name is Jimmy Shields and I live at 3212 Cantura Drive in Mesquite, Texas, 75181.
And throughout the discussion you just had, you identified the this that we're working on. Can you help me be more specific with what this is? Is there something specific or just the idea of the Charter Review Committee?
Well, I just think the ideal is more along my line of thinking. I'm not, you know, representing any special interest or anything of that sort. I'm just here as a citizen that is trying to help the great city of Mesquite.
Good evening. I'm going to read this, it's easier for me. Debbie Anderson, 2729 Ash Creek, 75181. After attending and/or listening to many of these meetings and discussing with others, I am leaning towards supporting the term limits. We currently have a very good group in our council, one that I feel works well together and for the citizens, but even that has the potential to change after several years in that position. And if the findings of this group is that the citizens feel them to be necessary, then I think I could support a three, two-year term. Downside, in my opinion, perhaps would be a less vigorous service during that last year and the last term. Following that term limit, I would think that a one-term layoff before running again would be sufficient. And I actually believe that this would give some of our very best council people time to reconnect with their lives and family and maybe reinvigorate them to serve again. As to single-member districts, while I see the possible benefits to those running to only promote themselves in their particular district, I believe as an informed and active citizen selfishly that I would like to be able to vote, as I do now, for any council member. Their votes while on the council should always be to the benefit of the entire city, and I think this will make them more accountable to all citizens, not just those in their districts. With what seems to be a community full of armchair keyboard experts, I truly wish that I had that secret to get our citizens more engaged in our city elections. If I did, I think I'd put it in a potion and add it to that expensive water system we have. But as I have not been very successful in getting neighbors interested in the Community Watch Group that I lead, I know it's an individual choice and everyone's busy, but there really is no excuse not to be educated with all the availability that we have now, either online or attending council meetings, and the availability of our current council to the citizens. You guys are also willing to answer back. I am in favor of moving the elections to November for the following reasons. I think it would be a cost savings to the city, as well as perhaps getting more voters to the polls. I agree with many of the past speakers that it's really a great embarrassment for all of us that the voter turnout's so poor. While educating the voters is a must, we cannot force-feed them. Adults should be wise enough to educate themselves in matters that affect their lives. I too would love to see more diversity, especially women sitting on the council, but the right persons, not just for diversity's sake. It's a large commitment, one that cannot be taken lightly, as you are all going to be beaten up on social media. I agree with the past speakers that education being available on the city's webpage would be most helpful to anyone interested, and with the encouragement and guidance from those who are currently sitting or have served would also be welcomed. I've heard questions brought by the committee as to police coverages in Mesquite. I believe we have some of the finest men and women on our force, and as our city has grown by leaps and bounds as to the number of citizens it has to protect, I believe that the number of officers per thousand should be reviewed and increased, perhaps at a gradual level to be more comparable to other cities of our size. While I am a huge proponent and supporter of our police department, we need to be, we need not to be behind the eight ball when it comes to our citizens' safety. Let's work at being more proactive and not reactive. As to compensation for council, I believe that not a single one of them undertook this endeavor because of the pay. And while in my opinion, they would still be underpaid, I think it would be fair to pay them that prized $50 they currently receive per month to per council meeting that they attend while conducting city business. In closing, while I believe that this endeavor to review and possibly make changes to our city charter is certainly a brave undertaking, I am confident that this committee and council will take all comments along with their knowledge and make the best choices as to the directions needed. But always stay cognizant that these choices will be judged by all those in our future to be either great or a failure. With lives so busy, many of us just do not have time to be as involved as we would like, but we must have the trust that those who have stepped up and so voted in as our city governance leaders will have the best interest of our city and the citizens' values. That's all I have. And I got in under time.
You did. Thank you very much. Very well thought out. Are you willing to entertain any questions from the committee?
I'm happy to, though I can't guarantee I'll have the answer.
Okay. All right. I think Ms. Wally has some questions for you.
I did. Let me add about your comments on term limits.
Thank you.
How long do you think, I mean, in your experience and what you've observed, I mean, can a person stay in office and still stay relevant and still be a good contributor? I mean, at what point? Is it at six years? Is it 12 years? Is it at 18 years? What is your?
I think that's an individual case-by-case basis. I've seen some leaders that are great for 20 years, I've seen some that are poor the day they get in there. So I think it's kind of an individual basis. I think there has to be some, I know we all have to have rules. Unfortunately, I don't know that that, having term limits is really going to get that much motivated to run. And that's my big concern, I think. But I think three, two-year terms would probably work out the best.
Okay, because that's six years. That's six years. And we've got-
Three, two-year term?
Yeah, that's, I guess that is- That's six years, right. And, you know, we've got several council members bumping up on that already.
Oh, I know. And if it was me personally, I'd keep the ones that we have now for a long time. But I can't, I can't do that. And plus, they wouldn't be, I don't think they'd be as effective. Sooner or later, they're going to get burnt out. So I think the burning out phase is, you've got to get them reinvigorated.
And if you wouldn't mind, does somebody else have a question? Because I've got one more, but, okay. If you're thinking about single-member districts and having a representative that represents you, let's say you've got a community where, or a city, let's say the city, 51% of the city feels one way on an issue and 49% of the city feels another way, you know, I don't know what, like, do we need more police officers or do we need, are there plenty already? Let's say 51% thinks there's plenty already and 49% wants more, just for example. How do you see that, or do you feel like it would, it's fair to the 49% if they don't get a voice on the council because the 51% votes for every single place and will dominate? I mean, have you thought about it that way?
I really haven't thought, no, I really haven't thought about it that way. I speak for me personally. I want, I vote every election. I want a say in it. And I, and I think that the more people that feel that way, the better off we will all be. Again, I try to educate myself on that vote. Not everybody does that either. I don't know what the answer is. I wish I did.
Do you feel like, do you think, just your own experience, I mean, when an issue comes up that concerns you, does it really matter what anybody else is doing?
Well, yeah, it does matter because they could be influencing a whole lot of people the way I'm not wanting them to be influenced. So you've got to speak up.
But you're going to stay with your vote, right?
I'm going to stay with my vote if I can, yes. I mean, there's going to be times when that vote can be changed in my, you know, that somebody could change my mind. Not saying, I'm not one of those stubbornites that, once I've made a decision, it's in stone. But if I feel the one way and I speak up or go that way, I don't oppose anyone else for just doing the same thing.
Right, right. I understand that. So you're fine with the way democracy works, right?
Correct, I am.
Okay, thank you.
Debbie, I did have one quick question. I've had a lot of friends and neighbors that have come and spoke positively about term limits and I'm trying to really understand some of the values and ideals behind them. When you say that we've had, or could potentially have, elected officials that need some fresh eyes, need to be invigorated, my mind goes to campaign finance, goes to a campaign school that could have more candidates and invigorate it through a campaign interaction to make sure we have a clash of ideas and values. So when I hear that we have maybe stagnation on the council or could potentially, and that term limits are a solution for that, help me penetrate what that means. What does stagnation look like? And I guess really, if you could speak to, what's your philosophy on what elected officials should do? For example, Monday, we had a conversation about a street, some lane reductions. And we had many residents that signed petitions and came and spoke and were very enthusiastic on the issue. And they probably outnumbered the other side. And I, as an elected official, felt like I had some knowledge, and not that they didn't, but I had had conversations with staff, understood some long-range plans, those kinds of things. And so I'm kind of in a predicament in my own mind. Do I go as a trustee where I've been entrusted by the voters citywide to make the best decisions with my intellect and research? Or am I a delegate for the people? And whatever the majority says, I need to make sure their voice is heard. So if you could have that debate and then include kind of what you mean by stagnation, not that you use that word, but-
Well, okay, when we vote a council in, you guys know a whole lot more than what I, as Joanne Citizen, knows, okay? You're privy to a lot more information. I do think that as, you need to listen to your citizens and hear what they say, but as to the debate on Monday, you guys, again, have been trusted to make that choice. That choice has been made several times, I believe. It's my money you're spending, her money you're spending. The best choice has got to be, and you guys have got to make that call. I can tell you one thing, my sister next door to me can tell you another thing, you know, my neighbor down the street can tell you something else. You guys have got to step up, you're the ones we voted in. You're governing us. If we don't like what you did, we have an opportunity to say, you're done at the next election. If we like what you did, we have the opportunity to say, yeah, you're staying on. Again, those that are educated.
Right. And I guess that's kind of, and I'm just using a hypothetical. I don't want to get into specifics on the issue. But if you like what we're doing, all of a sudden, though, that you have a situation where that person's termed out. So how do you rectify that?
I cry, I cry a lot, and I, and I hope for the next person-
Goes to the next one?
Yeah, I really do. And I'm hoping, I'm hoping that those that are serving now will be a good influence to those that come along next time. I think most of you are already in a lot of the ways that you're leading the city. I'm hoping that that will continue when you're no longer actually in a leading position and helping the next person that comes up in line, I hope.
The only thing I took offense to, I'm sorry, the only thing I took offense to was when you said that you were not effective in engaging your neighbors, because that's just not true. All right. That's just not true.
Well, not enough, anyway.
Fake news.
That's right.
All right. Thank you very much. Anybody else have any questions? I'm better off, she's taking off.
See if we can get this a little bit higher. I'll just predict regardless. Thank you to the councilman and to the committee for the recognition. For the record, my name is Jacob Jones and I live at 602 Warren Street. So I have quite a few things to say, so I'll get started on those as quickly as I can. One of the main concerns, or one of the concerns that has been brought up is the police force. In terms of that, I was doing the math on the city as it currently stands and what we can do to change the police force. The ratio that I came out to in terms of that, increasing the minimum police force currently by 40, is the ratio of 1.75 police officers per thousand residents, rather. That increases by 40, and I think that would be the best option that we have in terms of this. Next is, to some, it may be considered more of a housecleaning measure, but it still remains important to myself and to many people, is bringing more of the city business onto an online level. Anything from liability for negligence, that is one of the bigger things that I think that the residents of the city should have better access to on the internet. And then bringing, to my next point, electronic nomination, because we already have so many different measures to bring petitions as a society to the attention of others through electronic means, and bringing that into the nomination process, I would believe would be beneficial towards our elective system. And into the election system that we have, I think that a complete revamping of the system would probably be the best. The way that I envision for the city and the thing that I have, through my research, have determined is the best option for the city is to have all of the city councilmen run against all of the other city councilmen in terms of candidacy. That, in, from my opinion, from the research I've done, is the best way to get the best six city councilmen possible. From that, that brings us into a single transferable vote system, which essentially allows the voters to rank their top six choices for the city councilman, and the top choice gets the most number of points, ranging down to their bottom choice, which still gets points because they still want that person on the city council. It works best, especially if we're working with the all versus all system, and instead of having to select one person that you like, you're able to select as many people as you like and rank them to get the people you want the most on the city council. You can get more of a voice towards bringing them onto the city council easier. That system is currently being used for almost every single election in Northern Ireland where there are multiple representatives being chosen, actually. And one of the last points is a special committee for official misconduct by a councilman. Though ideally, we would have no official misconduct by any councilman or by any elected or appointed representative, but in, under those circumstances, in the current set of the charter, the entire council, including the offending council, possibly offending councilmen, votes with a two-thirds majority. As a solution to that, or at least a possible solution, I would like to propose a special committee for the instance of official misconduct comprising of a possibility of the non-offending councilman, and that's hoping that we don't have multiple councilmen doing the same case of official misconduct, the non-offending councilman and the mayor, if possible, because of the status of Mesquite as a home rule city, that should be possible under a charter amendment. And lastly, in terms of the charter, I believe that on the charter, there should be an official amendment stating that the charter is reviewed in a set number of years because having a charter that isn't looked over very often leads to stagnation. And I'm open to any questions that y'all have.
We'll start. Anybody have any questions? Yes, let's ready.
Thank you, Jacob. You raised a lot of good topics. My concern is the special, no, not special, electronic nomination. Are you only talking about nominations or are you talking about actually voting?
In that, I would only be talking about the nominations because I think that bringing people to the voting stations is still very important, having people in person. There are a couple of things in terms of smaller issues on the charter that I don't think should be electronic. I was looking through the charter just a second ago and I forgot exactly where I found those, but I'll bring anything up, including the fact that the voting should not be electronic. Well, the voting, the voting machines, but not over the internet, rather.
On the charter review that you were talking about, how often do you think that that should take place?
I was discussing this one with my family a little bit because I was talking with them about the different topics, and the first number that I came to myself was a 10-year term before the charter is reviewed. My parents were noting that it would probably be a little bit too short of a time. I think that it should be sooner rather than later, potentially 12 or 15 years. Every 12 or 15 years, the charter is mandated to be reviewed.
I think one of the interesting things, as you bring up a lot of new ideas, what are your feelings on what needs to be formalized in the charter versus what is a council position? Especially ones that have numbers, and I know the police is actually a ratio, but, for example, we've allocated budget well above what that ratio would be. And so, you know, how do you recognize what needs to be formalized as an amendment to the charter and there forever versus what can be adopted a little more agilely through the council?
I have other ideas that go past what the charter can and should do, but the majority of the topics, though, I do understand that at our current level, the police force is above the minimum requirement. I think that still adjusting the requirement should still be an amendment to the charter, and all of the main topics that I brought up, I believe, should be formalized in the charter.
And did you previously share any comments with us at any of the other three meetings?
I have not.
Okay. So what about term limits, single-member districts made in November?
In single-member districts, especially whenever I was talking about the all for, all against all system, that would eliminate candidates running for specifically their district. It gets a little bit fuzzy in terms of the naming of the places, the naming of the different positions on the city council, but all of them would have the same responsibility. And then in terms of term limits, that's one that I've been off and on about. I think that at the very least, if we do implement term limits, six to eight years would probably be the optimal amount, under my opinion. If we do implement that, then having at least one gap term would probably be the most beneficial. It's, we've seen scenarios of people staying on the council for way too long. We've talked about it, especially at the last meeting, referring to two council people that served for a combined 32 years. That gets to be a little bit ridiculous, and safeguarding against that, even if we have a good council, is very important. But ultimately, if we do implement term limits, we do need to have a policy to allow the good councilmen to be able to stay as involved in the city as they can.
Just to clarify, and maybe I missed it, you said six to eight years with one term? So is it-
One or two, one or two, six to eight years is what I said.
Okay. Two-year terms? That's the length of time?
Yes. The length of time on terms.
Right on. So potentially three to four terms, and then the one term that you were suggesting was a time, time off?
One to two terms is time off.
Time off, okay. So there have been some suggestions on that, and I think it's a really interesting idea, but how would that prevent two city council members who just kind of leapfrog each other and go for 32 years or beyond?
With that, that can be a possibility, but in the time that they would have to be taken off from being a member of the council, that either gives themselves a way to reinvigorate themselves, as many people have said, or it has given the city time to realize that a potentially bad councilman is not the best option for the city. Especially in terms of the two terms off, that would show that another potentially excellent council person would be a lot better than the person that they're replacing, especially though since I'm also proposing the all against all system that I was talking about. It wouldn't necessarily be two council people leapfrogging back and forth because they wouldn't be vying for one specific place over just a spot on the general council.
Well, Jacob, I just want to commend you, not that anyone else hasn't done great research and speak to a lot of important issues, but as a young person, I think that's really impressive and I appreciate you sharing your thoughts.
Thank you.
I second that. That the ranked choice option for elections that you mentioned unfortunately is not an option for us here in Texas. So who you need to talk to about that is your state legislator. But if you want to look at some examples around here of, you know, all against all or some cumulative voting or some proportional voting options, take a look at Carrollton Farmers Branch ISD because they've done it. And it's a simple system, and see what you think about that. If you come to one of the other meetings, I'd like to know what you think about.
One thing on that, how does, just to clarify for- One thing on that, how does, just to clarify for myself and for the rest of the people, how does proportional voting differ from specifically the single transferable vote system?
The single transferable vote invites you to rank your choices. The all against all or cumulative voting does not. You just cast equal, you know, votes with equal weights.
And regardless, ultimately, I was, whenever I was talking about the single transferable vote, it was more important to find a system that would allow us to have an all against all system and have multiple people that we would like on the council. The ranking of the system is ultimately less important, from my opinion.
Okay. Let me ask you one more question. For an all against all type of system, proportional, or one of those options, why would you prefer that? What do you see as the benefit?
I haven't seen it directly as much in terms of the city politics, but I've seen the possible danger of the polarization of putting one specific person against one specific person. It's been on the federal level, and we've seen plenty of that in the recent political cycle, but having a single person against another single person, it doesn't end up having the best options. Having six people that you would like on the council gives you the six best options. If you have six candidates for one place, and then five mediocre candidates, you'll have five mediocre councilmen, and then one good councilman. Rather, whenever we work with a system that's all versus all, you have all of those six potentially good councilmen on the council, and none of the potentially mediocre ones.
Any other questions?
Yep.
Yeah, and one thing that occurred to me when you were talking about that, do you see that as reducing conflict within the city?
In the all versus all system specifically?
Yeah.
I believe that it would. It seems that in the scenarios, specifically whenever I was researching the single transferable vote, it seems like that does produce a lot of the conflict in it, but I believe that in any all versus all system, regardless of the ranking or the lack thereof, would end up with less conflict in terms of getting good councilmembers that the majority of the city agrees with on the council and representing the city.
It seems to me like that would, if a person was running in a race like that, it would be incumbent upon them to sell themselves, not to attack anybody else. Do you see that?
Are you talking about if there is all versus all, it would, yes, there wouldn't really be as much room to do that, because in terms of even federal-level politics, there's a lot more slander whenever it comes down to two major candidates, regardless if it's a primary or if it's the last vote for that person. There's a lot more slander whenever it comes to that, and there's a lot more promoting yourself whenever everyone is running, as opposed to just one versus one, or even one versus two.
And one more question. The, you cited a requirement that were above the required level in the police department for staffing. Where is that minimum staffing level you're talking about?
In the charter, I can pull it up in the charter, I can show it to you in just a minute, but the current requirement in the, police requirements in the charter, it states that we must, as a city, be at a minimum of 1.5 on-duty, or not on-duty, but certified police officers per thousand residents, and I was specifically citing changing that 1.5 per thousand to 1.75 per thousand.
Okay. How is that, did you happen to see how long ago that minimum staffing level was put in?
I didn't see it as a specific amendment to the charter, so that would put it at 1953.
On time, though. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Any other questions for Jacob?
And I think I'd just like to reiterate some of the comments that, really appreciate your engagement, and fine product of MISD schools and also the Boy Scouts, and so I know that some of that civic engagement came from some great teachers and some great scout leaders along the way. So thank you for being engaged.
Thank you very much.
Sheri Williams?
I feel like I shouldn't be following Jacob. I spoke at the first meeting, oh, Sheri Williams, 1448 East Park Drive, 75149. I spoke at the first meeting held by this committee, but I wanted to say a few things in addition that I've heard, that I listened to, that influenced me from the other two meetings, and also just going back and looking over the charter again. I am in favor of term limits. I would like to see four consecutive terms, eight years, and then roll off for one term, two years. The reason that I think, it's not going to make it perfect, for sure, but I think that it does give other people chances to go up against and run for council and not be going against someone who's been there for fifteen years. I think that's a deterrent from others maybe seeking to run for council. I heard Ms. Hall at the last meeting talk about that, too, about the intimidation of that, and I thought, you know, that's really, for me, that would really be true. And then also, at the first meeting, I mentioned that because of term limits, I had a concern about having an empty seat, possibly, but in reading the city charter, supplement number 15, section 10, it's already taken care of vacancies in office, which I did not realize when I spoke. It covers filling the vacancy by majority vote of the remaining members of the city council at a regular meeting, electing a member or members to fill the vacancy or vacancies that exist. And such member or members, so elected by the city council, would serve in that position until the next municipal election, when the candidate elected would come on board and serve. And so my concern was, I didn't think there was anything in the charter to cover a vacancy, but I found that there is. And I'm going to say that I hope you're going to keep that section in it, in case there should be a vacancy for, to be filled. And I don't know if that's ever been done in the past. If y'all know, I would like for you to tell me that.
Roger Samuels was appointed.
Okay. So it has been implemented at some point in time. The other thing is, I am in favor of moving city elections to the November time slot, because people are thinking more about voting during that time period, and it could possibly draw more voters in. I didn't say educated voters, because I can't educate them, but I think it would make, it would bring more attention to the election, the council election, if it was moved to I would also like to recommend, more information, and this is a sidebar, I'm sorry, be posted about elections on the city website, and make it easier to access from the front page of the website. I believe that we should have helpful information about how to run for city council and mayor, and I have sent the committee some websites to look at that I found that they're exercising this on their website. I also think it would be helpful in possibly educating citizens, so there might be a better voter response. I don't know what could be posted by law, but I think that we could at least provide links to information about how to register to vote, and a sample ballot, instead of having the citizen have to go and try to hunt for it. And that might get more people involved and become more educated, because they would see who's running if we gave a sample ballot on the city website. Like, I don't know what the law says, if the city's able to do that. Looks like to me they should be, if they're listing everybody, because you can go to a voter, I go and look up, especially for bonds or anything that's being voted on on my ballot, I want to know about it before I get to the voter's box. And I am in favor of also looking at the police, the ratio per thousand people. I think it does need to be raised. I don't know what the recommendation would be, Jacob. I knew it was 1.5 from reading the charter, but 1.75 or 2% per thousand, I would go for, because we already have a very, our police force is overused for lots of things, and I love those guys, and we support them. I'm the president of the Rutherford Crime Watch Group, and we hear complaints all the time about, well, the police didn't come to my neighborhood, or whatever. Chief Cato has come and spoken to us, and has really helped in getting figures out there that are true figures in how the police department works, instead of on social media, where we get all the negative comments that could ever be about the police department. One more thing, the city charter supplement number 15, section 9, it talks about the term of office of incumbents, and councilmen needs to be looked at, because the charter needs to be generic, and it's actually mentioning people's names that were mayor and council members at the time the charter was written. And I think it should be more generic, and that just came to my attention, because I'm like, why did they put names in here? Just say, when the mayor rolls off, this happens, or whatever. But I would like for you to look at that, too, and just see what you think about it. And that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Min Wen. I'm at 308 Kess McLean, 75150. I want to thank the committee for hearing the citizens of Mesquite. The first thing I'd like to address is, we were talking about the ratio of police to citizens. To check your math, Mr. Casper's math, and Jacob's math, according to Monday, we have a population of 143,060. And when I called the police department, they said they had 221 police officers on duty. That gives us a ratio of 1.54. So we are above the 1.5, but it's very close, very close. Dallas, when I looked up, is at 2.5. Other populations, about 200,000 are above the 1.75, 1.8. The only outlier is Garland, and they're under 1.5. I do think we do need a bigger ratio, and another thing we need to maybe look at is how the population is calculated. We have 143,000, I'm assuming it's done by some of the census done in 2010, but I think we've talked about, or you guys have talked about in previous council meetings, that the crime rate at the motels on AD, those are not permanent residents, and that's another number of maybe one or 2,000 people that maybe need to be counted. I'm not sure how the vehicle for them to be counted would be, but to add that in there. So I do think the committee and the council need to take a look at how we keep Mesquite safer. And 1.5 is a good number, but I think from the history of it, we've always been close to that number. We've never been above that number by much. Another thing, this is funny, I was looking, I was watching a movie, and in 1955, a cost of McDonald's cheeseburgers, 19 cents, fries were 10 cents, and a Coke was 10 cents. And that's about the same time that we decided that councilmembers should get $50 a month. And $50 could buy a lot more back then than it can now, and I'm not saying that we should make it rich or go to 68,000 like Dallas does, but a fair and reasonable increase would be to like 450. When you look at it, the $50 is about 450 in today's money, at 19, I looked at 1955. So anything between 450 or 500 is a fair compensation for the councilman. It's not going to make you rich, but when you work, you know, 80 hours, sometimes 40 hours, you go to meetings at Agnew Middle School on a Wednesday night, I think a couple bucks would be a little better. One thing, we've talked a lot about term limits, and I think term limits is a solution. I think the problem a lot of people are worried about is the stagnation of bad councilmembers. And I think, I think Mr. Casper talked about this, I think there are other ways we can do it. We can look at campaign finance, in a way. I think one of the barriers that people are intimidated when they run is how much money they have to raise. And it's intimidating, you know, especially when we equate money with politics. And I've done some national campaigns, and I can tell you that your congressman, your senator spends 6% of their time raising money. I think we should look at maybe limit it, or even help people when they run, if they maybe do things like have more town halls and debates, so your average citizen doesn't have to put out the money to get the message out. If you have, in an election cycle, you have three big debates or town halls where the candidates get a chance to get up and speak their piece, it doesn't cost them anything, the city advertises it like the way you guys do this, and I think the city's done a good job. I mean, it's always great to see citizens out here, but it's also a little sad when we have a room with, you know, 20 people and 30 people, and 20 of them had to be here, you know? Another thing is, I think single-member districts would really help that as well. I think one example of a way single-member districts help is the example of the North Texas Water, the North Texas Municipal Water District. We're one of 13, and if we weren't part of that one, we would not be that squeaky wheel. Then we went and found three more. So now we're four of 13. So from about 10%, now we're a quarter of the district, and it's important for that one member to be heard. It might be a losing battle, but our message is heard. And I think when you do single-member districts, it's easier to run, because you don't have to get as many votes. It's easier to meet your members, because the area is not as big. You can literally go door to door in one of these districts, in a six-month period, and meet every single eligible voter there, and you get a chance to connect to those voters. And I think that's real important. Really, I love the idea of getting involved in public, local politics, and it's something that has been real important to me, and I want to thank the council and the city to allow citizens and actually put that information out through social media on their webpage. One thing that Jacob, who did a really good job, one thing, though, if you do something like you rank the top six, I think one thing, sometimes we have unattained consequences. And unfortunately, talking about partisan politics, that gives a machine, Democratic Party, Republican Party, a chance to run the board. It takes away diversity, because we're in a world right now where partisan is important. Unfortunately, it is. So what, if we run everybody together, the Democrats can put out eight candidates, the Republicans put out eight candidates, muddle in, muddy the waters, but people will suddenly vote, oh, no, he's a Democrat, he's a Republican, blah, blah, blah. And then instead of having a diverse seven-member field, we have six Republicans or six Democrats, depending on the way the wind rolls, or whoever's a better organizer in the state. That's just an unattained consequences that needs to be looked at. And really, for term limits, I like the idea of it, but I don't. I believe we do have term limits, they're called elections. In the last election, 3,200 voters voted, 3,200 out of a possible 50, 60,000 eligible voters. We had two open seats, one of those open seats were contested, the other one wasn't. The mayor wasn't contested, and Mr. Casper wasn't contested. If we do term limits, more of that's going to happen. And I know people are talking about intimidation, but I think there's other ways to fix that problem besides term limits. But, again, four-year, four, two-year terms and no gap year, I don't think that's a horrible compromise, but personally, I'm against term limits, and that's why. I'm just worried about getting the right people. It should be hard to run for city council, it shouldn't be easy, but it shouldn't be impossible. You know? It shouldn't be impossible. It should be something that a citizen can get up and have their voice heard, and be a representative of their city and their district. And right now, the way we have, we have four, four members, and then two at large and a mayor, right? If we have a single-member district, doesn't mean one person is just, they have to listen to the members. You still have to do a consensus, you still have to get a majority. And then with three open, three at-large seats, with the mayor included, it gives a chance for the city to work together and get their stuff done. And that's really all I have to say for today, and I want to thank you guys again. Yeah.
Thank you. Any questions? There's a few, yeah. We're going to start down here at this time.
Go wherever you want.
Do you have any? Okay. Oh, yeah, yeah, a lot of good points in your presentation. Something that we haven't talked about- Something that we haven't talked about or hasn't been discussed a whole lot is representation of minority interests. And you kind of touched on it when you're saying, you know, the all against all, you know.
Who from the 20 speaks for that? Yeah, who from the 80 speaks for the 20? That's an important thing, yeah.
My question is, is that any different from what we have right now? Because the same pool of voters votes on every single position in the council. The only difference is that the council candidates have to live in a certain part of town. But it's the same group of voters that vote for every council member. So the question that keeps coming back to me is, in a, in a system like that, how do you give a voice to minority interests? Whether it be women, whether it be racial or ethnic minorities or income levels? How do you, in a, in a system like that, how do the minority interests get their voice? Now, you mentioned term limits. That's one of the solutions that's often put forth before is enabling a minority interest more power. Can you think of other ways? Or what is your feeling about that? Do you think that's a concern?
I feel it's a big concern. And the idea of the single-member district helps that. I'm not saying we have single-member districts that are of a certain class. I think if you look at the way the schools are broken up, the five high schools, it's a pretty good representation of Mesquite. But if you're a minority member, let's say you're a woman or an African-American or an Asian-American, and you feel like your voice is not being heard in a single-member district, by you getting a chance to meet every one of your neighbors, you can do a coalition. Because you need less votes. You need less votes. And, and, and that's where, you need less votes. And I think that's a way for people to get their voices heard by, by being specific on who they target to get, to get people to vote. For minority voices to be heard, we need more minorities to vote. It's as simple as that. We just need them more to vote. And one way to do it, if you do a single-member district, it gives that candidate a chance to work on that unrepresented population.
So you would be for changes that would encourage more voters to participate?
Absolutely.
And would you be interested in other alternatives besides single-member districts?
Of course.
That would enable minorities to have a stronger voice?
Of course. I think you have to have an open mind when you work with a city as diverse as Mesquite.
I have two quick ideas. I think we've been having a lot of good conversations, but I think it's missing a big piece of the pie. If you look at our voter registration numbers, those numbers are really sad. And so we as a city are only talking to 40% who are even eligible, right, to participate. And so you're already missing 60% of the conversation. Do you think there's any advantage to the city council passing a policy? Think about how many points of interaction citizens have with their municipal government. Paying water bills, rec center, library. At every point of interaction, asking if they'd like to update their voter registration card.
I think that's a good idea. I'm not sure, but with the charter, I think one thing the city can do is work with the school board and make sure every student in government that's a junior or senior that's eligible to vote, gives them a chance to register. I think having someone like Jacob here shows that the importance of having younger people vote. And that's how you start training people to vote. But you're right, we should have those, that information out for every water bill, every, I mean, every water bill, right? Everybody gets a water bill. And, and they should have a registration form. But again, it's not that hard to register. And that's the frustrating thing. I think everybody in this county, it's not that hard. I mean, more people vote for American Idol. I mean, it's crazy. It's not that hard. And I'm not sure what you guys can do. I think it's a problem that the whole.
Don't worry, it's safe, I promise you.
I don't think, I don't think, I think it's a problem that every community has in getting more engaged voters. But I think some of the, to call out some of these councilmen, I'm so proud to see some of these councilmen out, you know, out and about. And it's great to see. And I think that's a big start. And I think, again, I haven't been involved in local politics as much as I'd like to. I moved back, I graduated from Poteet and went to Porter and Vanstone. And then I moved away for work and I came back in 2000 and raised my family here. My kids are at Poteet. So it's important for me to get more involved in local politics, but it's, it's not that hard. It really isn't that hard. And that's the frustrating thing.
The other conversation I wanted to ask you about is, some municipalities have begun to distribute vouchers for campaign contributions. Every registered voter gets a coupon for $25. And that is the only dollar that can be spent by any candidate. You have to actually go talk to a voter and get a voucher from them and turn it into the city. And that's the only sort of capitalization you can have. Do you think that is a good model? Or is that a violation of freedom of speech?
It's a good start. I think you would have to look at it. I think with, we do have to make sure we follow the Constitution. And, and, and I think that's a great start. Ideas like that are what we need to do. We can't just do the same old, same old things. It's not working. It's not, we're not getting engaged. And again, if that's the barrier that people feel intimidated is the money, that's one thing we definitely need to look at as a city.
Anybody else?
What would you think about, you know, like you said, we have four single-member districts essentially and two at-large. What would you think about having six single-member districts, but four of them at-large? But you have to live in each district. That would eliminate someone having three camp, three council members in one area. That's a thought.
That's definitely a thought. I, I still like the idea of voting single-member districts and the combination of the two. But you're right, we could have everybody in the 75150 zip code. We'd actually have four members there, right? The three at-large and the person that's there. And that's, that's a big majority. That's literally a majority of the council. So that's something that can be looked at, I would think. Also, if we do, is the redrawing of the lines up for the, at the charter, is that a possibility? The redrawing of the single-member district lines? I saw the map online. It's an interesting map. It looks decent. And I don't think it looks gerrymandered. But are we looking at that as a, as a, as a committee?
Yeah, so we don't have a mic.
A lot of this seems to be wanting to get more people to vote.
There are groups in town who have expended a lot of funds, made a lot of calls to get more people to vote. Even when you have, I was going to say, a negative campaign will bring out more people, but not necessarily. I mean, it just depends on how you do it and who's involved. I mean, I also see them depressed about some. But it's just, to get to vote over 4,000 in Mesquite on the municipal race, and that's record-setting, you know?
Let's set the record.
But you know, when people are, when people are comfortable, they, they don't rise up. You know what I'm saying?
Yes, sir.
When people are angry, I guarantee you, they will come out.
Well, yeah, and I agree. I think, I think Councilman Archer one time asked me, how are my streets? And you know what? My streets are pretty good. So I, I don't get as worked up about some of the other pottles. Because you know, my streets down in Keswick and northwest and Bell Lines, it's not too bad, you know, the streets I use. But you're right. I, I just hope we find a way. And I think the barriers to communicate are dropping with social media and online and, and people getting involved. It's just you got to get people involved and, and maybe even like the places of worship in Mesquite. There's a lot of churches in Mesquite, you know? If everybody who went to service on Sunday morning, 11 o'clock voted, we'd have a lot more than 4,000 people. You know, and, and it's just things like that. Those are some people we can, you reach out to. That's.
So the, so the one question you did raise was about the lines. Those lines are actually drawn by the council. The number of council members is set out in the charter. And so typically what, what we do, and I think that there's some Voting Rights Act provisions that we have to comply with and redraw those lines every, every so number of years. And I, I don't know the, the number of years that we do that. But I think it's typically with. Yeah, with every 10 years or with the census, I think we'd have to take a look at that according to the Voting Rights Act.
Judge, I have a quick question?
Yes. Not besides you two. What do you guys think about raising the pay for the councilmen? I mean, just because, do you guys have an opinion?
You said decide.
Besides the two councilmen? I don't want to put you in that spot, but, I mean, it's just, $50 might as well be zero, right?
Oh, yeah. I'd be all for, personally, if we were raising it just because if it would attract more of the candidates.
Exactly. That's a barrier. I mean, if we look at our council, we have what, what, two or three business owners, two lawyers, a pastor, and the outlier, the teacher, who makes a lot of money, I know. But it's, it's, $500 makes a big difference a month to, to working-class people. I think it does make a difference and helps justify some of the time away from family and from work and stuff.
Yeah, it's not being in favor of increases. Get them antiquated if you're paying $50.
Yeah, I mean, it really is. I mean, I can't buy a burger for 19 cents anymore, so.
And I'm also for that increase too.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. And the, you know, we've talked about the police, the ratio per thousand. And that, the charter sets the minimum. And your council, the current council actually is one of the first councils to say, let's, let's be higher than above that at this point. Because the hard part, and this is one of the things that you, you learn when, when you start sitting on that dais, is that cities are very dynamic and fluid environments. And so you can't take snapshots. You know, we can't work in a snapshot world. And so it makes it very difficult so in terms of maintaining those ratios because you've got retirements, you've got people that just decide to change jobs, things like that. So, but I, this council is working very hard at that, so.
Is it quality or quantity?
Yeah. Well, there's that too. Luckily, and I think that we're blessed as a community to have a very high-quality and professional police force out there every day and every night protecting us. So that's, that's what's helped us quite a bit. Sergio Garcia.
Hello, good evening, committee. My name's Sergio Garcia, 1724 Longview, here in Mesquite. During last week's committee meeting at McDonald's, it was expressed to me to come back and give further comments on single-member districts. Now, I don't know what y'all have already found out on your own, so I may speak on aspects of single-member districts that you're already familiar with. I may also touch on some common sense thinking. I want to start off by reiterating that I believe in single-member districts. If they're adopted in Mesquite, it would lead to a better representation and bring diversity to the city council. Single-member districts can or are thought of as a way to get more people to run for city council by making the undertaking easier, more manageable, or less intimidating. And to have the sitting council member more accountable to their district. To me, this is obviously increases the chances of a female or a non-Cancassian to be elected, thus better reflecting what the Mesquite community looks like. If a single-member district were to be adopted, the districts should relatively be equal in population sizes. As we also walk through the crafting of the districts, we need to fight the urge, the pull to gerrymander them. The population of Mesquite, 143,060, it would divide equally between the six currently existing councilmen. That would be about 23,843 people in each district. If we were divided by eight members in an expanded council, which I suggested last week, it would drop the number to 17,882 people per district. Now, you're on the committee, in the audience, and those watching online. If you could use your mind's eye to visualize a map of Mesquite and start to think about how six or eight districts would look like. And by way of area, the district, not one going by the same size, and yet the populations to be chosen would be close to each other. Now, despite challenges and problems Mesquite faces, I think we have a pretty, a pretty good unified community. The vast majority of people who live, work, and play here have a common goal of a safe, livable, and prosperous Mesquite. I think single-member districts will not lead to the creation or of uncooperative, competitive factions in our city. We are improving and growing every day. This committee is a great example of that. Now, would this really make it easier for people to run for council? Yes, because the candidate would have to run in only one area of the city. And voters of that district would have fewer candidates to choose between. Or no, because the area of some districts would be much larger than others, like that of a southern district could be probably. So a candidate in smaller districts, for example, could have it easier. They could conceivably speak to the same amount of voters in one afternoon that would take all day for a candidate of a larger district. The adoption and the creation of a single-member districts are going to be challenging. But if a proposition for it were to be put on for a vote by the citizens of Mesquite, I personally would vote for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Garcia? Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate it, yeah. You got an A. Anyone else wishing to speak tonight? All right. Well, we appreciate everyone's attendance and continued engagement. Next week, we are meeting, somebody help me.
Wilkinson.
At Wilkinson. We are meeting at Wilkinson next week. And we'll be at. At 7:00 PM. And then I think we follow up with Kimbrough after that.
Lower your vats around the air conditioner.
Right, right. I, I just want to, I think they're trying to get the, the school district is trying to get everybody to pay their tax bills. So that's, that's why the AC is where it is. But no, thank you very much. I also want to thank our staff tonight for getting everything set up. Did a very good job and for being here. So thank you for everybody's continued engagement in this process. Dan.
Can I pause a prayer? Especially because the earthquake that took place in Mexico and Puerto Rico, would that be okay? Can we pray together? Father, right now, our hearts are also with those folks in Mexico, Mexico City, so many that are still buried, they're trying to rescue them. We pray for them, Lord, that these rescuers, first responders, it's our neighboring nation, that Lord you would help them, God, to get down and to rescue as many as possible. We also know of this hurricane that just went right through Puerto Rico today, Lord, and we don't know all of the damage that's been done, but Father, we ask you to be with those folks as well. God, as we go our separate ways, we ask you, Lord, just to bless each one, and thank you for that, God. And we ask all these things in Christ's name. Amen.
Chairman, before, before we dismiss- Sorry. Talk about that. Sure. So each of the committee members have been provided with proposed survey questions. This is just a starting point, so we're going to give you some homework. And before the return next week, if you could just bring back any ideas or any additions you want to make to this. The survey questions will be put on a survey on the city website, and the survey results will be tabulated and be provided as part of the report of this committee to the council. And so don't worry about the artfulness of the way in which you ask a question. If you think it's a question and want to ask it, just put it down there and we'll figure out how to, how to wordsmith it together or get somebody that's smarter than Jeff and I to do that, which won't be difficult to find. Any questions about that? All right. Yes?
This is survey that's mentioned in the charge for the committee.
It is.
It's going out to all citizens?
It'll be on, no, it'll be on the city website.
It'll be on the city website?
Yes.
Okay, I thought it said it was going to be sent out to all citizens, but I don't know.
I, well, I don't know that we can afford that. But, but whatever the, whatever the charge says is obviously what we'll do.
Nobody can say that.
But we'll, we'll figure it out. It may be go out as part of the mainstream or have a, a link on the mainstream for people to get to. But we'll, we'll make it as accessible as we can.
When would it be up? It's not on the website?
Well, we're going to review it this week and, and come up with more questions. I would expect it to probably be up sometime before October or around the beginning of October.
And, yeah, let me address that question that we just had. What the concern is, is that we would not get the citywide survey results back. Not that we couldn't ask the question, we can. We wouldn't get those results back in time for us to meet our deadline as a committee to issue the report to the council.
Yeah, I'm just, I was just checking.
We can probably do both.
And I asked a question about it to one of the city council members, because it was supposed to go out in August, is what it said on the one.
Right.
And then Cliff-
Then we established this committee.
Cliff said it was coming out later.
Right.
Is it possible, I mean, can we, how will we know that it's going out so we can publicize it to like the Crime Watch Group? And I have an email to them.
Yeah, we use the social media apparatus of the city to help distribute the, the online quiz that we'll do. And then it's still hopefully, our intention as a council, this is a different conversation, to do the citywide survey that's going to be happening phone-based anyways, and hopefully have data from both. But we wanted to make sure we got timely results so that this committee can make a report.
Right. And, and will it be on the Facebook? Will they say there's a, really?
Yeah, we'll use the social media of the city.